First being the Tuolton Moving Forward Quarterly Update from Mr. McCarthy. Welcome, Mike.
There we go. All right. So this is our, I'm not sure what number we're up to now, but quarterly update for the Tuolton Moving Forward Program. As I think a lot of you know, we have a whole lot going on. And able to start with my apologies to whoever got stuck in traffic on Boon's Ferry Road trying to get here. But as you all know, the road needs paving and trying to pave it at night would not be good because it would keep people awake all night. And we did strategically wait until after school ended before we did the paving work. So today, tomorrow, and Wednesday will be the three worst traffic days there. So suggest alternate routes or during the paving work. And there we go. All right. So tonight's focus is construction in, you know, what's coming up this summer and what we've just recently completed. And it's a lot delivering quite a bit. Talking about some of the key projects. Our next quarterly update would be a bus tour, tentatively September 25th. And people can check progress at tweltemovingforward.com. So this was the map at our last update. Showing 25 projects built and 11 more underway. And this is our current map. So fortunately, we've managed to get to completion, or at least substantial completion on a number of projects, which to me is quite exciting. So that included 65th Avenue crosswalk near the hospital. That's open. And so a lot of people using it, a lot of people walking to get lunch or from the apartment complexes going down other areas. Then the Hazelbrook area project where it actually included seven different elements. We'll get to that in a little bit. New flashing lights, the RFB's rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Martin Azzi at Mohawk. Also on Boon's Ferry, near 84th. So about the Blue Lot or near the Commons. And then Martin Azzi at the Fred Meyer entrance, really cleaning up some of the ramps in that area, moving a bus stop to a much better location. And then quite a bit along Sagert Street, we started noticing, you know, there's a lot of changes happening in this corridor. So this is Sagert Street from 95th all the way over to 65th. So that's about a mile and a half of road. And, you know, we did the new always stop a couple of years ago now as part of that 95th Avery Project, which made it a lot better, especially for kids crossing and walking to 12th and Elementary School. The new flashing light crosswalk here at 93rd. And then, you know, we'll be paving across Boon's Ferry. It's got paved recently by the pavement mania's program. The new traffic signal at Sagert and Martin Azzi. And then actually a project that'll be on your consent agenda tonight for a construction contract award for this swale here that's on the Sandalwood condos property. And that's to basically, in place of the drainage ditch that's there, install a stormwater treatment swale. Which accounts for a lot of the stormwater treatment needs for the whole program by treating quite a bit of water before it enters the system and remove, you know, installing the plants that remove pollutants as the water flows through them. So that covers a lot of the stormwater needs for a whole lot of the rest of the program. And so that's right in this area here. I think it's a big win-win because it takes what had been a not-so-attractive ditch and turns it into a pretty attractive amenity in that open area of the condo complex. And you can see it from Sagert Street. We're working on the new shared use pathway over I-5 and working with ODOT on some of the final approvals there. Because it's a bridge over I-5, it's ODOT jurisdiction. But they've been pretty good partners collaborating there. The new flashing light crosswalks from a couple of years ago here at 72nd. The new sidewalks along this whole south side. Another new flashing light crosswalk coming with our project in the Las Casitas 67, 68 neighborhood. And then one of the first projects we built near Wampanoag at Sagert Street. So a whole lot coming on just one corridor. This was the Hazelbrook project that's recently mostly completed. The part along Hazelbrook Road here. We are planning to restripe Hazelbrook Road with a solid double yellow center line and then bike lane on the south side. But the paving program is doing a slurry seal on Hazelbrook Road. So we figured we'd wait until after the slurry seal went down. And then we'll put the striping in late August, early September. We did redo the ramps at the Hazelbrook Jergens Corner. We did the striping on Jergens, which I think really makes that road look different. We took the existing paving, kept the same travel lanes, added in a striped bike lane in both directions, and then were able to keep a parking lane on the west side of Jergens. Added a new crosswalk at Kyle or between Kyle and Wasco. And then three new sets of flashing lights, the crosswalks at 108, Teton, and between Jergens and 100th Court. So a lot of that recently got completed or almost completely done. And here's some pictures of some folks using it. Someone who was really excited about having the crosswalk in. So she sent in a photo of it being used, but I think some students walking to Hazelbrook School. And then here's some of the striping in the bottom left corner there. Just a few little white lines really kind of narrow the visual appearance of the road. So it didn't, doesn't look quite as wide open anymore, and we hope that'll reduce traffic speeds. The neighborhood traffic safety projects, we talked about fixing up the Fred Meyer Corner. So instead of looking like this, it's a pretty good flat open area that you can get around pretty easily. Restriping the crosswalk and moved bus stop. And the Boon's Ferry project. As you're aware, we're paving this section this week. But the rest of the Phase One is almost in final completion stages. So the new pathways have been installed. We fixed this up with pretty good, nice concrete walkway now. Phase Two is out to bid. We opened bids on it tomorrow. And that's the section from 12th and Sherwood Road down to Sagert. Including what I call shoe-horning in a bike lane, kind of along the section near McDonald's. Moving the median slightly, restriping the road with standard lane widths to get a bike lane in within the existing curb-to-curb width. And then adding a little bit of bike lane here south of Warm Springs and redoing the traffic signal at the Warm Springs intersection. And then it will also include some improvements down at Iback Street, some new curb ramps there. Waiting until after we finish the waterline project in that area. Same thing down at Iowa, a curb extension to make that crosswalk a whole lot easier to use there. And here's some of our before and after pictures of like in this case, here's what the pathway looked like before, and this is what the same one looks like afterwards. Granted, we got a little better sunlight, so it does make it look nicer that way, but I think the pathway itself looks quite a bit better as well. And project that just recently got started, you may have noticed Thursday night when they kind of did the first really visible work removing some of the streetlights and the plantings in the median here along Fred Meyer in 12th and Sherwood Road. And that part of the median will be coming out and getting replaced with a narrower median to open up a third lane to help people get to the traffic signal to get to this, I call it the Cabela's Fred Meyer traffic signal. And then working with the state to reconfigure some of the lanes. I think we've talked about that already, which we think will really help traffic flow getting to I-5. And then we are just ramping up construction to take care of this issue to build a pathway along Highway 99 between Pacific Drive and 124th Avenue to give you a place to walk besides right through here. So this hedge will be coming out partly to make space for a walkway and partly at the request of the property owner. And a new separated walkway going in really behind the ditch from the road. So that'll connect the whole Pony Ridge subdivision, Pacific Drive up to 124th Avenue, and eventually up to the new trail that the Parks Department will be building along the Roamer's Rest area and under Highway 99. So I think that'll be a really great connection once both projects are done. Council Bus Tour is coming Monday, September 25th. And it's a tentative date. Planning an upgrade to the bus's air conditioning system this time. One of our big next steps coming in the transportation realm. We're just kicking off the Transportation System Plan Update, which is our 20-year vision for transportation around the city. And there'll be a lot more discussion coming there, some in these meetings, some in other meetings, but really trying to listen to the community. And with that, any questions or comments?
Chris is Mike. That's Ray.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. Last time we, I don't know if it's something that you were, you presented on, but there's that bridge between on Sagert that people are saying that needed more light. It's the, it's like the walkway and the sidewalk, the sidewalk. It's right between, I think, Martin Azzi and that Horizon.
Yeah.
That part of the, this project or?
We're still looking into how to include the, you know, extra street lighting there. And I think it's along that raised section of Sagert, kind of in front of Horizon particularly. As you get to the bridge.
Think that, I think the walkway is really narrow for like bike riders. Like if you're, it's, they're narrow. It looked very narrow and during winter days, it's really dark. Even like something that for instance, that it's a lot brighter would help a little bit, but it's just right, it's on, it's, it's on the bridge. I don't know if you ever, but if you ever drive through there. It's on the bridge right when you're driving. It seemed very narrow for bike, for those who are riding their bikes. And then the sidewalk seems so, I don't know. I don't fix that, but I remember we talked about that last time at one point. Somebody mentioned it.
Yeah. I'll take a look into what we can do about getting more lighting in that area. We've checked on it a bit. We're trying to work our way through some approval processes there. On the sidewalk or the walkway itself, the plan is to make it a bit wider. So make it more like an eight-foot wide walk with a curb and then the flexible posts on the curb as separation. So at least feel like there's some more separation from the vehicles. And we're planning to try to get it far enough away from the bridge railing that we can drive the sweeper down. Because accumulation of debris in those is a big issue. I'll keep pushing on how we can try to add lights in that section.
Driver, driving ones, and I'm glad I just saw something moving. There was somebody wearing dark in like winter days when it's already dark. And I'm like, oh my gosh. I just, I personally felt like, oh my gosh, I need more lighting or something. I barely saw something, something moving and it was a person and I thought that needed something there that can highlight.
Yeah. Yeah, we started the conversation after last time we talked about that. No. Still a little more of the approval process, the other agency.
Just the positive comment and feedback. People love the lights that are between Avery and Celeste that I get all these great comments. People love it.
Great.
Are noticing the project and they're very happy with it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Council Brooks and Council President Pratt.
Thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to make my comments about the bio swell and thanks for talking about the impact and it's a pretty impressive impact for the whole system to have one. So I hope that we keep thinking of ways to include them around. And go above and bond. And the other thing is, I felt like tonight's presentation was pretty timely. I read an article about pedestrian safety. And that there's a lot more people getting killed by cars than there ever have been before. And it affects the South more and they're wondering if it's temperature-related, but part of it also is that people drive more SUVs and people are more likely to get killed. And then there was a list of improvements that could be made that was in the article, and they're the things that we do for the traffic calming. And so I just wanted to point that out and my appreciation for the work that we're doing and and that this bond is going towards the safety of our pedestrians and I don't know, just reading the article had a different kind of impact, even though we've had this conversation for a long time. So I just wanted to say thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just thank you for, I love how there's so much focus on safety and whoever came up with the idea of moving that Tri-Met Station at Fred Meyer was brilliant because everybody was taking a left, right turn there and everybody was standing waiting for the bus. It was not a good situation. I was wondering how the 12th and Sherwood extra lane that's being added, what, how long will that project last?
See, well, first I have to give Tri-Met credit for the idea of moving the stop at Fred Meyer. Because they said, yeah, we want to get our buses out of where all the cars are trying to turn right to go in. And we said, yeah, we think that's a great idea. So yeah, I'm glad that worked out so well. The county's work on 12th and Sherwood, is that what you're asking about with the adding the extra lanes or this one? All right, okay. So that's starting, well, started last Thursday, kind of the real work. The plan is to get that done by the end of October. And one of the timelines we're really trying to reach is paving the section, kind of going up the bridge to the I-5 South ramp and getting the striping in. So we're really hoping to get that in before it starts raining too much to install the striping. So the current plan is to get it done by September, October.
Other questions? That's the Hillier.
Thank you. I only have a comment because other things that I had have been covered and all the appreciation. An appreciation for the fun art that is in the sidewalks that are new. I think that is a Tuolton touch and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you for the update. Everything looks fantastic. I haven't gotten comments about the stoplight that was put in there on 65th near the hospital. Some of the comments were saying that it's really nice, but the firemen or the ambulance can't get through, should something, because they, I guess they used to go through the the middle lane to get through when there's emergencies. I wondered if that had been mentioned to you at all.
It was, yeah, thank you. We took a look at that. We took a look at doing more of a mountable kind of island. And yeah, in order to get the emergency vehicles through, because we're trying to really balance that.
Yes.
The concern we had is number of places where mounted islands have been installed, we've actually had increases in people getting hit by like less responsible drivers with four-by-four trucks, for example, kind of just getting used to going up and over it. So we tried to really weigh the concern and we ended up coming back to we felt like the increased crash potential was going to be too high if we did a mountable curb compared to the full height curb that we did. And then the county, I think weighed in pretty strongly on that as well, but they really were concerned about the mountable curb and potential for pedestrian crashes.
So, okay, that's, makes very good sense. I think the concern they had is that if there was an emergency and then traffic gets backed up on both, both sides, where would the emergency vehicles, how would they get through that location? With the, because before they used to go through the middle, that, that, that middle lane. And now we have the mount, you know, the, which is really nice. But I guess there's no change in that anymore, correct?
I think, yeah, we had quite a bit just working out the different approval processes with the two different counties there.
Yeah.
And they both really, like Washington particularly, the Clackamas also came in with, you know, they felt like if we put a crosswalk, it really needs the island protection.
Sure.
And that because of some of what they'd seen in other places, that it really needed to be a full height. So that is, I think, one unfortunate drawback.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from Mike? Right? Thanks for your update. I know for my part in Hazelbrook, I've seen doing, looks like they're doing the final touches on a lot of the touch, touching up of crosswalks and stuff like that. So very appreciative to have all the projects that are done in the Hazelbrook neighborhood. And looking forward to, you know, that increased travel time that we can get to the light faster in front of Fred Meyer and travel through there and to have a lot less congestion, especially given that, you know, one day 12th and Sherwood Road will be done and widened by the county and there'll be additional vehicles we need to get through our city.
Yeah.
That's it for me. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up, we have a parking permit zone request led by Chief Pickering. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss a request for a residential parking zone on the streets of Southwest Blackfoot Drive and Southwest Osage Street in Tuolton. So a little history. Initially, these two streets, along with two other streets, were brought forth in 2018 with the same consideration for the parking issues that they were seeing around the school during school days and school times. At that time, we did conduct a survey of Southwest Martin Azzi Street, Southwest Blackfoot, Southwest Osage, and Southwest Alabama. The results from the survey at that time were supportive of Southwest Alabama to be designated as a residential parking zone. But Martin Azzi, Osage, and Blackfoot did not have the support from the residents at that time. If you remember, in late March or early April, the issue came back up from some residents on Southwest Blackfoot and Southwest Osage. The issues at hand that we see mostly are the non-resident parking in front of the homes of the residents there. The visibility issues that are created by vehicles parking wherever they want to, for the most part. Some vehicles parked illegally in front of mailboxes, hydrants, intersections, making it difficult for the mail to be delivered, people to put their garbage cans out during the day. And even some blocking driveways for homeowners to have ingress or regress into their homes. Some of the major complaints that we see were litter, trash, cigarette butts, large oversized vehicles parked there for extended periods of time, and then even long-term parking from some area people in the area. I will note that last year during the school year, we did receive 12 calls for service to police for parking issues or hazards that were created by non-resident vehicles parked on Blackfoot and Osage. So the, the two streets and questions are there in red. So they would be Southwest Blackfoot. The north end where it intersects with Martin Azzi and Blackfoot as it intersects with Osage and where Osage intersects with Martin Azzi. So those would be the two streets that were surveyed at this time. There we go. Just for some context of what the streets actually look like during the day. So as you can see, multiple cars parked wherever they can find a spot to park. And most of these cars were found to be vehicles that were non-residents or vehicles, primarily their students, high school students that parked there throughout the day, and also parents who want to avert the long line to pick up children from the elementary school. So they use Blackfoot and Osage as another avenue because there is a walkway from the school to Blackfoot, Southwest Blackfoot Drive. So parents will use that as a way to to park and wait for their child to come out again, causing it's a pretty significant congestion in the neighborhood. So as per usual, we did complete a survey of the 25 residents on Blackfoot and Osage. There was 19 surveys sent to the residents on Blackfoot, six surveys that were sent to the residents on Osage. Of those 25 surveys that were sent out, 15 responded with a, with a response to the survey. Of the 15 responses that were received, all 15 were in favor of a residential parking zone in their neighborhood. The breakdown of what, there was a few questions that were asked. So question number one is, have you experienced or observed a non-resident parking problem in your neighborhood? Of the 15 responses, 14 said yes, and one did not answer. The second question is, do you believe that the parking is a problem, is significant enough to call for change in the city's parking rules to allow a permit parking zone in your neighborhood? Again, 14 of the responses were yes, one response was no. And the third question that was asked was, a parking permit zone would require you and your visitors to display a parking permit on your vehicle only if parked on the street. The parking restrictions would be in effect from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on school days. Are you for or against the idea of this for your neighborhood? 15 responses were all yes, that they would be in response or in favor of a part, residential parking zone. The result, just the results breakdown, 12 of the residents lived on Blackfoot and three of the residents lived on Southwest Osage. Again, all were in favor of the residential parking zone. I'm sure this might be hard to read as the letters are pretty small, but these are actual comments that were received either on the survey or from emails directly from residents that lived on the two streets. And again, they mostly just talk about the noise, the disturbance, and frankly, the rude and disconsiderate, mostly high school kids who park and leave their trash and leave their cigarette butts and things behind. And again, just causing a nuisance for the neighbors there and blocking driveways. And then again, as the neighbors tried to cordially ask, hey, don't, please don't, we're met with less than desirable responses from those that they spoke with. So as you can see, there, there was several comments that came in and most of them were, were simply just, there's too many cars trying to take up too much, too little of space. So the recommendations, again, the Tuolton Mini Code 8-1-252 establishes the residential parking zones, which allows the council to establish the parking zones for the purpose of prohibiting parking on public streets except by residential permit. So at this time, we would make a recommendation that the streets of Southwest Osage and Southwest Blackfoot be under consideration for a residential parking zone for the school hours on school days from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Southwest Blackfoot. So I will say that there's a little asterix to that. So several comments we received from the residents asked that the extension be to 4:00 PM rather than 2:00 PM. When the code was initially written several years ago, the school day was different. After COVID, the school day was actually extended to where school now actually gets out at 3:45 or 3:50 for the high school specifically. Though, some of those kids, if they have second lunch, actually don't have to be back in class until 2:11. So if parking permit zone ends at 2:00, the, they have the potential to park there for the last portion of their day coming back, which could cause an issue. So I would also make a recommendation as we looked at the code. The code does specify 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I think it would actually be cleaner in the future if, if it said school days during school hours. So.
Yeah, so I think the intent would be to, if you give direction to bring this one back, that we would change like the whole code about parking zones, just to be what, what Greg said.
Done. Okay, questions?
Questions?
Council Ray has it and Council Hillier.
During school days, you say it will be extended to 4:00 PM?
Well, we would, we'd recommend was that, we would look at, just not making it so specific, but I'm just saying, school days during school hours. Yeah.
Did they mention anything about people that come and work in the area, like for instance, like people that provide some kind of care for someone there, or would they need to get that permit and how, how can they act?
Yeah, so if the residential parking zone were to be enacted, each individual resident would get information on how to obtain the permits that they would need. The permits are free of charge and they can also get temporary permits. So if they were to have a graduation party or have something where they would have more vehicles than would be allotted, they could come in and request temporary permits for those people. And again, it's only for those that, that would, that would park on the street. So a vehicle was to be parked in the driveway or in some other way, they wouldn't need the permit. It would only be for those on the street during the hours of the school.
Yeah, I'm thinking of people that might have like a caregiver that comes. Yeah, I'm thinking of people that might have like a caregiver that comes daily.
Yeah.
And might need some kind of permit for that.
Yeah, and we, and we would make sure to work with them to make sure that they had the adequate permits for their.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So just knowing the overlap on the Byram Tuolumne High School campus, how do you foresee enforcing something that says school day, school hours when they're two, you know, two twenty-five for the elementary and then three fifty-five for high school?
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason of, of kind of doing away with the specificity of the specific hours, um, to make it more incumbent. You know, we do have other residential parking zones that do, um, about other schools. Hazelbrook Middle School to be exact. So trying to, to meet all of those criteria and being very specific can be problematic. Um, and so I think by saying school days during school hours would cover, and then again, we would, we would work, um, exclusively with the school district with both the high school, the middle school and the elementary schools to make sure that there was, you know, proper information sent to the parents prior to, in the summertime before school got started again, so that the information was spread amongst the, the.
I just wondered that overlap can be questionable.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, Council Gonzalez and Council President Pratt.
That, that's very good because it would prevent us from having to revisit this again. But what, how do we deal with it? There's any evening events? Sports activities in late evening, how would those be included in this?
Yeah. So I think, you know, again, there, most of those are going to be a case-by-case basis. Um, we, we see parking issues at a lot of our schools that have sports fields. And again, we deal with those, um, on a case-by-case type of a situation. This would really, um, eliminate just the parking on those two city streets. Um, and a lot of time with most of the sporting events and things that occur, there's not the volume of traffic and the school district parking lots can typically handle those events that would, would occur.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, I just might suggest that you modify your school. I like that idea because it, it, but maybe modify it to a half an hour before and a half hour after, because you're going to have parents dropping off before school starts. So that would be my only suggestion.
Yeah, questions, comments? Folks okay with this proceeding on and with the, so we can do the, what's involved with doing the code change?
I believe it's a some, simple ordinance that just adds, adds this zone to our existing ordinance that lists, um.
I'm talking about the, the first one.
I, I, I think it's, it can be part of the same ordinance.
So there's no staff time, there's no research that's been done, traffic studies.
No, no, it's not like a plan text amendment or a plan map amendment.
All right.
No. And it's a simple ordinance.
Right. And so, uh, I guess we'll talk about it then, but the idea from Council President Pratt, the half hour before and a half hour after, we can talk about that night, uh, when we get to it. But folks are okay with giving directions to starting to move on with this and Chief Pickering?
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to council meeting, the gender review communications and roundtable. I've got, uh, Council Hillier, you're up for pledge allegiance tonight. Uh, we have no, and now, um, no proclamations, I believe. Make sure that, that doesn't change the last few days. Uh, nope. Uh, any questions, concerns with the gigantic consent agenda tonight? Cheryl and I were talking, I'm going, I've never seen it this big. Yeah, twelve items, like wow, we're doing a lot of reading again tonight. Any questions with those concerns? All right. Uh, with that, go ahead and start the roundtable. I'll start with Council Hillier.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so on, uh, June the fifteenth, I attended the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency or WACA. I attended their meeting virtually. There, um, was pretty good attendance. There's a lot of discussion passing their, um, the board of commissioners passed their agenda. A lot of different discussions about the hundred days into the new facility and all the different things that need to be still taken care of as, as they, um, the growing pains are are being taken care of. Um, they were re-accredited. It's a process apparently communications, um, agencies go through. So that was exciting. And really the biggest, um, takeaway for us as, um, community members to remember is that on August the first, the, um, Metro West will no longer be our ambulance services, but it will be A M. R. or American Medical Response. So that's who we'll see around our communities, uh, starting on August the first. And then that evening I went to, I've been asked to participate in the Tiger Tuolumne School District's Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. So, um, I went and learned and will start some work there. And then I was with many of you at the Plantback Garden event. So that's it.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, on on June fourteenth, I attended the C four Metro Subcommittee, um, meeting, um, was the alternate, alternative, um, councillor to, uh, to be there. So, um, basically I just was making sure that I was listening to what, um, they were saying, but, um, nothing that, uh, I thought would be to report, just, which is they're listening and, um, making sure that they're considering us, uh, if any changes or anything happened. Um, I also I really have not had any other committee meetings, but, um, I did attend the Fox Hills Twenty Wine, Twenty Year of Wine Celebration, or I think the community does the, does their, um, just get together and it was really nice to attend and get to know, uh, the other side of Tuolumne since I'm on the, the Washington side. So it's really interesting to be there and just get to know people and, and hang out, um, in a very, very informal way. So, yeah, so I've planned to attend other ones, just because they do talk to you and approach you and they ask questions. So I really like that. Enjoy that. Thank you.
Council Gonzalez.
I wish I had more to report, but there's nothing to make the update other than, uh, I hosted the, the Wine Wednesday for the Summer Solstice. It was a very good attendance. Mayor, thank you for attending and Council Reyes. A lot of informal conversation happens there, which, which is very nice to get good feedback from the community locally there, especially since our list of members of that one Wednesday has grown to almost nine hundred members, which is significant, um, for Wine Wednesday. I'm just trying to figure out what a good method of communicating with that, with, with, with my community, um, not getting too, too political, but I'll at the same time, giving them uh, what the city's doing and all the good news that were, that's happening around here. So I'm hosting the third to last this year, so I welcome every one of you to attend. And I would reach out to you individually and ask you to attend. So thank you.
Council Brooks. Council Brooks.
Um, I just attended one meeting, the Tuolumne Arts Advisory Committee meeting, and there were a few items. We, um, discussed out the outside agency grants that we award every year. In the submissions, the Community Enhancement Award, which I'm just going to say again, because we kind of skipped over it during COVID, and that's for business community members and, um, other Tuolumne community members that contribute to the beauty and art in our community and for us to formally recognize them. So we had been doing that pretty consistently, and then it kind of dropped off of our agenda on the committee. So we're, like, someone's going to be coming up, but if anybody ever has an idea around that, please submit it to the committee or talk to me about it, and I'm happy to, um, discuss it. And then we, they did a beautiful, um, call to artists for the Veterans Plaza. So, um, that request is out there and, um, I think that the job that the Arts Committee did and Julie did was really fantastic and, um, we had really good feedback on it as well. So, if that's, should be up, and if there's somebody that you think should know about it, it's posted around, but um, it's always good to give somebody a heads up if there would be a good artist for that project. Thank you. They're very excited about the project, obviously.
Council President Pratt.
Um, yeah, like many of you, I attended the Plantback Gardens opening. That was, it was, I think the most exciting thing to me is that they plan them for families and they're going to have three and four bedroom apartments. It's just amazing. There's a lot of thoughtfulness that's gone into this project. On, um, last Wednesday, I went, there was an I two oh five diversion Subcommittee that, that had been put on pause since tolling got put on pause, but they had a meeting. And, um, the whole discussion was about reconfiguring that committee and, um, making it more, well, I think we all kind of came to a consensus. We want it to be a, um, where we're digging more into the weeds on tolling and we're trying to, um, give a little input to our tech members, like the mayor, and, and to C four and that, um, we're trying to pull our communities together to, to be in unison on, um, what our ask are and how we're approaching ODOT as this process goes on. And then last but not least, um, this morning had, we had a climate action plan steering committee and we looked at a little, um, phone app, but I don't think we were really thrilled, but, and they're moving forward, talking to the community. So we'll be hearing from them in the next few months.
All right. A couple of days where we're just, yeah, back-to-back meetings. On the fifteenth, I want to thank, uh, Chief Pickering for attending the Tuolumne Chambers Business Advisory Committee Public Safety Meeting. Uh, they had Chief Pickering come in, uh, Sheriff, uh, Garrett and D. A. Barton to come in and give us a annual, an update since they had the key leaders breakfast. Um, it was very informative to find out where we're at with the state of maintenance of the jail. The DA's continuing struggle to, uh, prosecute cases because of the lack of resources. And, uh, also the lack of resources to defend, you know, people who are accused of crime. Um, but we're making progress on that. Uh, they're, both chairs had a meeting the same day. So first was Clackamas County. Uh, Chair Smith was talking about Clackamas County's efforts. They're starting to roll out. Um, a lot of their, you know, they're behind Washington County, Moab County in terms of metro supportive housing initiatives. Uh, that's starting to roll out in Clackamas County right now with, uh, facilities being brought online or in the pipeline to be brought online, plus, uh, getting those supportive wraparound services out throughout Clackamas County. On Washington County, we focused in on, uh, time, place, manner of camping throughout the county and, uh, got an update on Washington County's budget. Situational, out there budget situation, uh, with lots of questions about, you know, again, um, what we can do about misstep, uh, the jail, uh, we've already decided about the library. From what I gathered, the sheriff had, uh, some open positions that are not going to get filled. But it's still actively recruiting to get, he's about twenty, uh, sheriff's short at the jail. Uh, patrol officers were decreased a bit, uh, but he's struggling, just as Chief Pickering is, to find qualified candidates to do law enforcement in the area. Uh, and then, uh, for lunch, we had the area mayor's lunch, again, more camping, time, place, manner. And then a discussion of, um, what happened in Tigerd, uh, with the, uh, reading at the library, uh, and the threat that, with the threat that, uh, Tiger received over the, uh, storytime and which is amazing, uh, the FBI was right on it with Tiger didn't tell them exactly what they could expect. So in the they want to be cautious, they didn't want to have any incidents, so they canceled the storytime and Mayor Lou was, um, we thought we had a tough time with Norwood, had a tough time with that, uh, and then, um, but they, they got through it and, you know, safety was utmost in Tigerd. I tended to plant that garden, uh, planted gardens, uh, groundbreaking, uh, looking forward. I just can't believe their timeline. They, they're, they're thinking they're going to have it open by next, the end of next summer. Like, wow. L M. L M. C. Construction must be fully staffed to get that done, but that'd be terrific if they, you know, they get that up and running by the end of next summer. Uh, exciting thing was to go to Mary, uh, Mayor Rory's, or I can't see his last name, Beashawski's swearing in. I think my last name is bad, his is worse. Uh, he was sworn officially as mayor. Remember, he was an interim mayor until he got, he got elected. And I guess he has the distinction to be the youngest mayor in Oregon at twenty-two. Uh, yep, it's amazing. And he's, he knows his stuff. Uh, on the twenty-second, we had the Metro Mayor's Consortium meeting. That was kind of a light one for a change because the legislature, you know, was playing catch-up at that point. Uh, so the, uh, Conference of Mayors folks presented on the benefits of joining the Conference of Mayors, even for a city our size. Uh, there are benefits according to them, but I just know, in talking with Cheryl and I, look at the price tag associated with joining is phenomenal, because it's really big, it's really for bigger cities, but they do have a small city set aside, but I'm just like, it's free, it's crazy. Twenty, yeah, it's unbelievable. So G P I Small Cities Consortium was the discussion about the U G B expansion and, uh, lack of availability of industrial land in the area. And how can we work the cities in the, uh, metro region, work with metro to figure out where we could get industrial development upside and not just CHIPS-related jobs, but any kind of manufacturing industrial in the area. Uh, that evening was the Wilsonville Clackamas County Dinner. Pretty well attended. They had terrific presentation on their transit-oriented development. They're going to build a public permanently affordable, uh, housing facility at the smart area, at their granted area. There's a, about an acre and a half spot that's empty. They're going to build it right there. Uh, they put, uh, first floor will have some transit information center, possible cafe and a spot for services for the folks who live in the, in the building. They're hoping to bring that online in two years. Uh, three floors, uh, about a hundred units or so. And then everybody's favorite subject for the last, last few weeks, uh, Wilsonville laid out their time, place and manner. Uh, how they came about what they're, what they implemented, uh, I believe a week ago. And today, everybody's favorite, the R TAC meeting. I'm going to, I got a lot of notes from this morning because, oh, uh, ODOT is walking the walk and talking the talk about listening rather than just spewing stuff to us. Today, they released their financing plan, uh, this afternoon. Everyone's been waiting for this. So what's it going to be? What's going to cost for all these projects? They're projecting how much they're going to bring in. Uh, that got released this afternoon and it's going to be presented to the Oregon Transportation Commission on Wednesday. Uh, they have to decide up or down or modify it because it has to be in the governor's guest, but, um, governor's desk by July first. High level is that if you look at all the projects, they need to get done as part of what they call the Urban Mobility Stat Strategy. It's three point seven to four point three billion dollars for all the projects. When you look at the available funding for everything they have, then that's federal state money, tolling money, other, uh, H B two thousand seventeen money, they've got one point one billion. So there's a huge shortage. Um, so big part of the discussion today was realistically, they've got enough funding and tolling associated with it to build the bridge. But not the additional lanes in two oh five. They're not, there's no money for it. Just, just not there. So with R M. P. P., remember that's Regional Mobility Pricing Project. That's the congestion pricing piece. That's what they might rely on to get the additional funds. Plus, uh, you know, the discussion is off the table about V M. T., increasing gas tax, uh, vehicle registration fees. But it's going to be interesting to see what the O T. C. decides on Wednesday because there's just a huge budget gap between the projects and the actual money they can raise. And the curve ball we're throwing them is that the R TAC wants them to relook at their tolling scenarios that we want to have it looked at where tolls are eliminated. And they're just strictly congestion pricing on off, on all the lanes and then start twisting it, you know, just congestion pricing on two lanes or congestion pricing on one lane. Uh, so there's different scenarios. They said they will be doing this. Uh, hopefully we'll hear something in eight months about this because the next phase of R M. P. P., we're supposed to hear something by September, uh, by winter. As far as these scenarios, the problem that they're saying, uh, with changing their tolling revenue is that their short-term borrowing capacity keeps going down because of the delay in getting tolling done. So they need that borrowing capacity because, you know, basically they're going to leverage what money they have. You know, put it towards a bond and their creditworthiness is going down, if you will, because of, uh, tolling being pushed back or the ability to raise the funds they need, uh, to pay back the bonds. They also talked about today, uh, equity, which is a big focus, making sure those folks who can't afford tolling, how we can make sure they have use of the freeway system without having to rely on, uh, diversion, you know, or, um, on public transit that doesn't exist. Um, so there are a lot of people that don't have a choice. You're going to have to take the interstate. And if the tolls are something you can't afford, we're trying to, they have a, uh, the Equity Committee is trying to figure out how to make that happen. So it has been, uh, as little impact as possible on folks who can least afford it. And then we, the. And then we, the. The most controversial thing was they had a, what they were calling Nexus Projects and Mike has left, so I'm going to have to go back with him. They want to like a universe of projects that will help with mitigating diversion. And they have some criteria they want, like, you know, it's, it might be on your R T P plan. And it's already been vetted, you know, the thing that's holding you back is money. But we got, we went back and forth with, if you have no money to pay for the lanes, how are you going to pay for diversion? We got in this circle conversation today, but. It was, it was, it was a pretty good conversation. They were listening. All the concerns, I, you guys saw the letter I sent. They addressed that. They spent fifteen minutes addressing my letter, which was great. They addressed Commissioner Maps's letter also. They are listening. I got to give them that. And during their, you know, now with the session done, they can start focusing back on tolling. They got to get this deliverable to the governor by July first. So if you haven't had a chance, the email went out from O dot late this afternoon. It's a twenty-four page document, the tolling plan. So it's not hundreds of pages, not mind numbing, but you're just going to see numbers that make your eyes roll. On what's involved in getting the region to where. Traffic actually flows at forty-five miles an hour, but it's the idea what they've, Jay says. You know, I five and two oh five should be doing at, you know, and that's the whole purpose of congestion pricing. So take a chance, look at it. I'm going to try to do public comments on Wednesday at nine o'clock. It's virtual. Commissioner Savis is already going to do it as well as Mayor Rory. I just haven't had a chance to go through the twenty-four pages yet. I just know the impression of. We're spending a lot of time on this and we've got a two billion dollar hole that we got to fill. I don't know how they're going to do that. Or then, you know, we said R M P P. You know, that's going to be a lot of money of pricing. And finally, I don't want to keep beating this up. So the, what they're envisioning on the Abernathy, if they just do the Abernathy alone. They will get three hundred and eighty-five million dollars over thirty years. But why they wanted that, and that's excluding tolling the Twelton River Bridges. They'd like to toll the Twelton River Bridges because that'll bring in three hundred additional million, three hundred million dollars additional. To get to them towards that three point seven, because that's not on the table right now, since they can't afford to build the additional lanes. Yeah, they can't. And so, so they're going to have, it's going to be huge to see how they present this to O T C on Wednesday. Again, it's at nine o'clock. It's from nine to noon. And how the, what O T C is going to do with this financial plan because it's, it's. Not good. I, I'm all for the bridge being built, but the concern is that once you put the, you know, the bridge completed. Toll goes in our bridge, you're going to have diversion because of the bridge. So folks are trying to figure a way around the bridge through Oregon City and Westland. They don't have to pay the toll at the bridge. And that's just going to crush those two cities. Beyond, you know, compare. So more to come on that. They did agree that the R TAC will not sunset at the end of the year. It's going to go at least through January twenty twenty-six. So we'll continue to be a thorn in their side. Anything on that? Yeah. All right. So it's about five to seven. Go ahead. I'll adjourn the work session. We'll come back at seven and begin our regular city council meeting.